Of Clovis Council Meeting. Given the current shelter in place order covering the state of California and social distancing guidelines issued by the federal, state, and local authorities, the city is implementing changes to participate in council meetings. The council chambers will be open to the public, but we will be implementing social distancing policies and will limit the number of people who may enter the council chambers. This meeting will be webcast and accessed at the link shown on the screen. Members of the public are encouraged to participate in meetings by accessing the webcast at the link noted, providing written comments at the same website, or participating by phone, or coming to the city council meeting in person. We are practicing social distancing and can only accommodate a maximum of 16 citizens at one time. Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to say that we're joining the citizens who have been outraged by the circumstances surrounding the death of George Floyd in Minneapolis. Our prayers are with the Floyd family, and our prayers are also with our nation. We stand with those who are peacefully protesting this issue, and we stand against those that are hijacking this event with their own violent agenda. I will call the meeting to order and ask Councilmember Waylon to do the fight salute.
Please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag and our republic. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob. And if the clerk will call roll, please.
Councilmember Ashbeck?
I'm here.
Councilmember Flores?
Here.
Councilmember Monatua?
Here.
Councilmember Waylon?
Here.
Mayor Besseger?
Here. Now we come to the public comment portion of the meeting. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda. Does anyone in the chamber wish to address the council on any item on the agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, do we have any written emails?
Nothing beyond what's presented to you, and one of them is a general comment, and the two are for item number six. So nothing beyond that.
Great. Do we have anything on the web?
There are none.
Okay, I will close public comments. In regards to ordinances and resolutions, with respect to the approval of resolutions and ordinances, the reading of the title shall be deemed a motion to waive a reading of the complete resolution or ordinance, and unless there is a request by a council member that the resolution or ordinance be read in full, further reading of the resolution or ordinance shall be deemed waived by the unanimous consent of the council. Now we come to the consent calendar. These are items that are routine in nature are placed upon the consent calendar. They will all be considered and voted upon in one vote as one item unless a council member requests individual consideration. A council member's vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Motion's in favor of adoption of the consent calendar are deemed to include a motion to waive the reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar. For adoptions of ordinances, only those that have received a unanimous vote upon introduction are considered consent calendar items. Any member of the council wish to pull a item on the consent calendar? Lynn?
No, I'm just prepared to make a motion when it's ready.
Any member of the public wish to have an item on the consent calendar pulled? Seeing none in the chambers, is there any on the web?
None.
Okay. Lynn, we're prepared for your...
I will move for approval on the consent item, consent agenda, excuse me.
We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Ashbeck?
Who was the second, John?
Councilmember Flores.
Thank you. Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Councilmember Monatua?
Aye.
Councilmember Waylon?
Aye.
Mayor Besseger?
Aye.
Now we come to administrative items. Administrative items are matters on the regular city council agenda other than public hearings. Item five is consider review and approval of a resolution 2020 dash for 2020 to 21, City of Clovis Annual Budget Five-Year Capital Improvement Program and Information Regarding the Clovis Accessory Agency, continued from the meeting May 18, 2020. Jay Shingle is our presenter. Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Actually, it'll be Jay and I here. We're going to do this a little different than we have in the past. In the past, as council will recall, we usually have each department come up and kind of run through their departmental budget in an attempt to keep as many seats in the chambers open for the public as possible. Most of, or many of the department heads are not here tonight. They are participating via webex. Jay and I will be running through the presentation, and we have some department heads here in the room for questions, but if you have any questions on the specific department budgets, just ask me, and I'll defer to the department head that's online if it's something that I can't answer. So with that, we'll get started. So the budget, as presented a couple weeks ago and introduced, is a $282 million budget, and 59 million of that is capital improvements, 223 in operations, 77 in general fund, 83 in enterprise funds, 59 is internal service funds, and 4 million in special revenue funds. As I stated a couple weeks ago, enterprise funds are fairly status quo, and I'm going to use that term quite a bit tonight, "status quo." And when I say that, it basically means nothing has changed except the annual increases in benefits, insurance, and salaries for the existing personnel. If there's any change to that, I will identify those changes. But enterprise funds are fairly consistent with past years, and we'll get to it later. There is one new enterprise-funded position. The general fund is not status quo. As council is well aware, the pandemic has greatly affected our revenues in the general fund to the tune of an estimated $10 million revenue reduction between, including the current quarter and then next year. So to make up for those revenue losses, 8 million of that is being made up through fund balance and savings. So it's savings in the current fiscal year results in a fund balance that we can carry over into next year, and then savings next year. Those two items add up to $8 million, and then we are proposing spending $2 million out of the reserve fund. The general fund is structurally imbalanced. Our expenditures exceed our projected revenues. As I said earlier, we're making up for that by using some fund balance carryover, $2 million of emergency reserves, some very significant expenditure reductions. We'll go into a little bit more detail as we go through the various departments. The biggest impact is we have 19 unfunded, frozen positions in the general fund, and most of those are in our public safety. It's police and fire. They are, those two departments are the heaviest users of the discretionary revenue, so the impacts fall heaviest on them. So we have 19 unfunded positions, and our purse costs continue to rise. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through it department by department, and the page number will be shown, and that corresponds to the page of the budget book that, we haven't had this bound yet, we're going to wait until after it gets approved, but you should all have a copy of this. If you have any specific questions, you can look there and see what's happening on that page. So the council clerk, manager, and city attorney budget are relatively status quo. The biggest change is that we have an election in March of 2021. Councilmember Monatua and Ashbeck are up for reelection, those two seats, so we have to budget for that, and that's an every-other-year thing in our budget. The cost of the actual election is the biggest change. Just a reminder, after this next election in March of 2021, we switch to the November election cycle. So then we'll be having an election in fiscal year '22, '23, but it'll be in November instead of March. Information Technology, which is part of the city clerk's department and the Assistant City Manager Department, 14 full-time staff members. We have one frozen open position right now that we're not filling. They provide help desk, really working a lot on the security enhancements to the system. With all of the working-from-home and VPN, it just, every time you have a connection to your system, it's a potential security risk. So they're implementing some new security and web content filtering, along with replacing desktop units that just cycle out of service. They're also working to help the Public Utilities Department upgrade the SCADA system and virtual server project. Again, with those, we're very conscious of security issues. And then they are assisting the Finance Department. One of the things we are looking at is in the next, over the next couple of years, we are going to have to start replacing our financial computer system, the finance and utility building system. That's a very significant undertaking, both in cost and in just the scope and work. So IT will be working closely with finance on that. So for Community and Economic Development, this is relatively status quo. There's some changes in the amount of grants we're getting, but the, while the budget, there's no significant changes to the number of personnel or the staffing of this, their focus has obviously changed in the last couple of months. And a huge amount of work is being done by Andy and his team for business recovery and retention and trying to help businesses get through this unprecedented economic downturn. We are also, it's going to take a lot of work and put a lot of work into trying to rebuild tourism and hotels and try to bring those jobs and industries back, along with the continuing to look for job growth potentials, make sure that we get commercial growth in the new development areas, that we don't just build residential units in Loma Vista or Heritage Grove, but that we have commercial to go there as well. We have allocated some significant dollars toward affordable housing through our buy-down program where, through this accessory agency, we put money into an account that is available on a first-come, first-served basis for affordable housing projects to buy down their impact fees, continue working for home rehabilitation and ownership and first-time buyer assistance, and we also have some money set aside to help households that are struggling due to the current economic conditions. General Services, this budget, this is, I mean, General Services covers a wide variety of aspects. If you look at the bottom line, you can see that the budget is going up by 3.6, 3.7 million dollars. But if you look at the line item, the second line item up there for employee benefits, that accounts for just about the entire increase. The only other increase is there's no new staffing, it's just the usual benefit increases for the employees and salary increases that are already in the contracts, but the employee benefits, and we're going to, I'll run down some details in a later slide on where those exactly are happening. But that's primarily where the growth in the General Services budget is occurring. One thing to keep in mind is the senior services and recreation budgets. They are relatively status quo, which seems odd that, you know, why would we be status quo when the senior center's closed? It's a bit of a placeholder, but it's also a situation where we have a lot of temporary staff that comes in for programs in both the senior center and recreation. And those temporary staff are generally, are primarily funded through the fees charged for those programs. So if we don't have any programs, then we don't need that staff, but we also don't get the revenue for those programs. So it's, even if we don't open our rec and senior for the next year, it really doesn't have a net effect on our budget. We would lose, we would save some money, but we'd also lose some revenue. So it's kind of a push on that. For the time being, while the programs are not open and running, we are using our permanent staff to assist with other programs such as the meal delivery, the outreach to the seniors and such, so we're keeping our permanent staff, diverted them to other things. We have, what some of them doing on the special cleaning in the city hall, so we're not really affecting the permanent staff at this point yet. So this is the breakdown I was telling you about. The health insurance costs right now are estimated to increase at 10 and 1/2% this fiscal year. That could be less. There's so many question marks in this budget. That's, with these times and what's happening, there's a lot of question marks. These are our best estimates, and we will have to adjust going forward. But right now, the estimate was that the costs were going to go up 10 and 1/2% because of the slowdown of scheduled procedures and medical usage. That might result in the savings. We won't know until the end of this calendar year, but we are projecting a 10 and 1/2% increase at this time. Retirement contributions are going to go up 14.4%, and then the liability pool increase is going to go up $256,000 due to some significant losses in our RMA. Facilities maintenance and support, which is part of the General Services, that budget actually went down because we, with the current COVID situation, kind of our pause in spending, we deferred to some projects that are necessary, but it's not necessary this fiscal year. And with the economic times, we're looking for every savings we could find, so that actually went down. And then, as I told you, on the rec and senior service budget, they're status quo. Depending on what happens, we could, you know, spend a lot less, but if we spend a lot less, we're going to get a lot less because we won't have the programs running for the revenue. And then transit includes an addition of a lead bus driver for training and a management analyst for grants. That's an enterprise-funded operation. It has really no bearing on, or no effect on the general fund, I should say, on the discretionary general fund. It is funded completely through local transportation funds, and that money can only be spent on transit. So it is well within their plans. So the Finance Department, Jay's department, there is an increase here. The increase, again, is just, there's no new employees. There's a little bit of work being done to start laying the groundwork to change out our finance system, but this increase generally reflects just the increase in cost of benefits and salaries for the existing payroll. So there's 21 full-time staff members in there. They process 250,000 transactions, and again, some of the projects are, they're implementing currently a new software that helps, really, in their record-keeping and building financial documents. And then we are going to start the process of the upgrade to our finance system. And that, I cannot overstate the scope of that project. It touches everything we do, from our budget to our utility billing, and it's going to be a multi-year project. And the other thing they're working on is the long-term debt financing for some of the capital improvements that we'll talk about a little bit later in the public safety vehicles. So Planning and Development Services Department, again, this is an enterprise-funded, primarily an enterprise-funded department. If you look at this, when I first look at this, I, my jaw kind of hit the floor, is that's a 34% increase. What are we doing? There's no new staff coming onboard, there's no new programs coming onboard. That's largely a bunch of projects that we are consulting for right now. We have an SB 2 grant for planning, we have the general plan consulting studies for the changeover to the VMT rather than the congestion modeling for SEQA, specific plan updates, housing element issues, ag mitigation plan. So those are a lot of very big consultant bills that are coming through. So we're not expanding the department as much as they're just undertaking some things that are due or overdue. And then there's a little bit of money there for some office repairs and just then the general increase in everybody's salaries and benefits.
Nick?
Yes.
Couple of questions on that. First is, has COVID affected the number of permits for the last two months at all? And then what's the projection, if it'll affect it at all?
So Jay, go ahead and go to the next slide. So we have not seen that significant a slowdown yet. And we haven't seen, you know, talking to the development industry, there hasn't been a huge landslide of cancellations of existing contracts. And, you know, there's a number of various economic reasons for that, but we haven't seen a big slowdown yet. We are projecting only 700 units next fiscal year. Now, again, in this environment we're in, that is our best guess. It is, it's probably a 25 or 30% less than we were projecting just a couple months ago. Next year, we were expected to do probably 950 or 1,000, not 700, but we will continue to monitor that and see. It really depends on just how long this lasts. This is our best guess. We'll adjust accordingly, but we are looking at that, and we did downgrade it quite a bit already. The 700 units is below our usual, you know, average, and like I said, it's 25 or 30% less than we had projected just a couple months ago.
And second question is with regards to VMT. I think we may get a workshop later on, but does that extra fund, if it starts July 1st, does it result in more revenue for the city at all, or are those all allocated already to specific items?
No, the VMT, really, the VMT is a change to the SEQA law, and it, what it does is it requires a different type of analysis for any new development or any, for the environmental phase of any new development. So a development that has already had its SEQA publicly noticed will not be subject to that, but any development project that comes in after July 1, or gets its SEQA noticed after that, this is going to be a real hindrance, actually. It makes it harder to build greenfield development, which most of Clovis's development occurs on the edges. Land is available here. It's going to hinder development for any new, any new project that doesn't already have its SEQA in the pipeline.
So the extra, I guess the estimated fees are 20, 30, depending on what it is, 1,000 more, potentially, those are, those will go straight for environmental?
Mitigation.
Mitigations.
Yes.
And it doesn't come extra to the city at all? For example, it doesn't go to bus fund to improve transit?
Well, depending on how, and we'll have a much deeper talk of the VMT when we bring back the plan, but for instance, as part of their mitigation, they could maybe build a new bus stop or something like that, which benefits the city, but it, it's not money that we can spend where we want. It has to be a bus stop there in that subdivision, you know, to serve that subdivision, whether there's ridership or not. So, you know, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have, they wouldn't be able to just say, here's some money, you know, put a bus stop in wherever you want it. They'd have to show that there's a direct connection or a direct offset.
And is VMT also one of the reasons why we're projecting much lower, potentially? Because depending on how much homes increase and how much amenity or not, so?
I would say that at this point, we don't, we're not for sure exactly how we're going to handle the VMT, so we didn't calculate that reduction in. And the other thing is, is if a subdivision map has already been approved, or the SEQA for that has already been approved, then it's covered. And there's quite an inventory of permitted lots or lots that have been already environmentally cleared that won't be impacted by the VMT. We would probably see the real impacts of the VMT a year from now, two years from now, as the current inventory of lots gets built on, and then the new lots are subject to these new provisions. But this, the reduction we're showing here down to 700 is primarily due to the COVID issue, not the VMT.
Councilmember?
Councilmember Flores. And VMT, for those who are not familiar with the jargon, is vehicles miles traveled, and it's a new way for, a new law that's coming in that will be implemented July 1.
Correct. I apologize. It is vehicle miles traveled, and in a nutshell, in the past, you had to analyze the traffic impacts of a new subdivision for SEQA, for California Environmental Quality Act, as to congestion-based. So is this going to add congestion? And if so, you mitigate it by widening the road, adding signals or such. This law changes SEQA to where after July 1, SEQA has to look at the vehicle miles traveled. Does this project add to the, you know, is the expected vehicle miles traveled from this project exceed the current average? Well, anytime you go out, you are going to be increasing your, you're going to be more vehicle miles traveled than the existing city. So it's a complete change in the way you address the SEQA process in the project. Okay, so the Police Department, as I stated earlier, the Police Department is one of the heaviest hit by the current budget situation. There is a total of 14 vacant positions in the Police Department that are going to remain unfilled. They're frozen at the time. That's nine police officers, two dispatchers, two community service officers, and one crime specialist. We are moving forward with the replacement of 15 police vehicles. We, two months ago, I was hoping to do more. This is actually from some fund balance savings in the previous fiscal year that we transferred to the fleet fund specifically to pay for public safety vehicles. This was an issue where, well, we could try to save the cost of 15 vehicles just in case we needed that with the COVID reduction, but we're really getting to the point with our public safety fleet because during the last economic downturn, we cannibalized the fleet fund and went years without purchasing replacement vehicles that our vehicle, the age of our fleet is way beyond where it wants to be. And if we deferred these 15 vehicles, basically 15 vehicles doesn't even help us catch up. It just helps, keeps us even. If you look at, the Police Department probably has approximately 150 vehicles. We want to keep each one 10 years. That means you've got to buy 15 a year on an average. So this is just staying steady. I still think it's prudent to move forward with this. The money was already put into the fleet fund for this purpose. These will be leased, but the money is there to pay for these leases, and we just have to replace those vehicles before they start costing us more for maintenance or just on a reliability issue that, just to keep a level of service.
Do we know what kind of vehicles we're going to be going after yet?
Chargers.
Okay. Thank you.
A couple of other things that, in the overall budget, are not huge costs, but they are significant force multipliers or upgrades, is the Drone First Responder Program that Police Department presented to council a few weeks ago. And then we also have a contract that came before council a while back that is included in this budget. It's an amendment and an increase to our contract with Axon, who provides the body cameras, and this really updates all of our tasers. There was a couple of different generations of tasers out there that the officers were using. This gets everybody using the same taser, and it's a much upgraded, modern one that provides a lot of benefits. So here's some focus items from the Police Department, and we're going, we're going the wrong way. I wish we could say we're going the other way, but increase in staffing has always been a focus of our Police Department, to continue providing the level of service, and we're actually going backwards. With the current situation, we're at 0.84 officers per thousand capita, which is the lowest of any city in California of a population over 100,000. So they are, they are stretched thin. They can, Police Department continues to pursue and explore different grant fundings. We don't compete well in a lot of these grant fundings for the Police Department. To a certain extent, they're a victim of their own success, but they don't compete well and have not had, and they get some grant funding, and they're always looking for more, but, and will continue to do that. They continue to use emerging technologies such as the Drone First Responder, looking for ways to stretch the dollar further. And by doing those things, you can see some of their department priorities right there. Their goal is a priority one, response time of less than five minutes. It's been 4 minutes, 54 seconds, so we're meeting that goal. Safest city in the valley. Last year, the Clovis's California Crime Index was 606. We met that one. And they shoot for 90% approval on the citizen surveys, and they got 95%. So even with, I mean, we keep stretching them and stretching them, but they're finding ways to do it, but it is a significant challenge for our Police Department.
Thank you. When we say safest city in the valley, what is our definition of valley?
Let the chief speak to that. Let the chief speak to that.
The ones we typically compare to, and we've used this for quite a while, Bakersfield, Clovis, obviously Fresno, Hanford, Kingsburg, Madera, Merced, Modesto, Reedley, Sanger, Selma, Tulare, Turlock and Visalia.
Okay, so we could say between Modesto and Bakersfield.
Pretty much, yeah.
All right, great, thank you.
Can I, regarding our zero point eight four per capita staffing, do the officers who are injured and off on injury, do they, are they included in that or excluded from that?
No, that's all, every officer, so that's a hundred officers. And then you take the population and calculate that out. So it's like to do the math, it's one nineteen divided by a hundred times a thousand gives you that.
But realistically, that number would actually be lower because of the, usually most police departments have ten percent of their workforce off on some type of injury or they're healing up from something. So that number is actually just probably a little lower.
Correct. And then you take command staff, which there's seven of us, so really working bodies on the street is probably realistically seventy, seventy-five. Currently, we have sixty-two patrol officers. And it's, you know, it's tough to maintain what we're maintaining right now. And just, just in the last couple of weeks, we've had three shootings, which are very uncommon for the city of Clovis. This weekend, we we had a shooting and starting to see some gang activity moving to our area. So obviously, we want to have the resources to go out and push those gangs back out of our city. And with the resources we have, it makes it difficult. A lot of times, we have to do these with overtime operations. And the more and more we use staffing on overtime, it just, it starts to wear people out. So we got to be, kind of ride that edge and make sure we don't wear people out, but also keep our city intact and safe.
The fact that we're able to do what we do with the level of staffing, I think it's a tribute to the the type of individuals that we have been able to recruit, train and put out in the field. And that's, that's what we're making up for our force multiplier by getting quality. I just wanted to point it out that even the point zero eight four really isn't realistic.
No, for sure. And recruiting is that much more difficult, as you guys know, with law enforcement. And in today's day and age, it's going to be that much more difficult recruiting people into this field of work. So when we did have authorization for one oh nine, we had a hundred and we were trying to recruit those nine people. And it was very difficult to find quality candidates to come and fill those positions because, as you know, we don't want to just fill with whoever. We always want to wait and settle for the best. And sometimes we rather go short than than with not the best. But also, we're at point eight four at this point and it's, we're falling behind for sure.
Question, Mayor. Chief, I don't want us to be reactionary to where our men and women start to break down. So how, how do we gauge that? I mean, how would, when do you know to come to us to go, it's too, my men and women are, you know, stressed out, they're overworked. So how, how do we balance that? Because we're telling you no more. So that, so do you just suck it up and tell all our men and women and go, this is it for the next two years? Or, you know, there has to be something in which it actually moves us to sort of start to look at ways to help you. And I want to know what that is. Is it when it drops to point seven? Or is it just, we look at the, how your men and women are doing and go, they're at the, you know, where they're breaking down physically and psychologically? Help, help me understand that.
Well, I looked at a report from twenty fourteen was the master plan and it referred back there that we wanted to be at one, one point two. Honestly, right now, I'd love to be at just one point oh and have a hundred and nineteen officers. I think we'd be in a good position at that point. But four is not good. We're holding on and luckily, we have a great community and supportive people that call our police department when crimes happen so we can address them. But if if that ever turns or we lose that trust or, I don't know, but it is, it's very challenging right now and we're just trying to keep it together and keep our city safe and be responsive. I don't know that I can answer it. It's really financially, if we, you can only afford what we can afford. And right now, it's in, it's a tough decision. You got to have officers, you got to have firefighters, you got to have green grass, water the lawn and cut it. And you guys have to make the decision on how we balance that all out. And it's, whatever you tell me I got, we're going to work with. At some point, our officers will get tired, but we'll keep pushing on. The other night, we, we had some, our target got broken into and we put out a page for officers to come out. Within four minutes, we had five officers responding from home to come and help. So they're, they're willing to do what they need to do to keep our city safe. But again, as time goes on, it gets wearing. So we just want to make you aware of it. I know, I know we're the safest city and it's tough to come up here and say we need more officers. But I was shocked when I, when I did the numbers. I pulled twenty eighteen numbers was what I could pull. And we were the lowest staffed city in the state of California, over a hundred thousand. You take cities over fifty thousand, we were the fifth lowest staffed. And you take everybody from Bakersfield to Stockton, we were like number eight. And that's what people, McFarland, small cities that are ahead of us. So we are, we are one of the lowest staffed cities per capita in the state of California. And I just wanted to just impress that upon you guys to let you know how far we've gotten. And at some point, we have to do something because the city keeps, it's a beautiful place to live. It keeps growing, we keep building houses. And as we go to the Heritage Grove to the north, it's only going to, only going to complicate things. So at some point, something has to change and I don't know what that is.
And I guess the question would probably be to my peers, but also to, is that something where we ask you Luke to sort of present options for potential assistance to, depending on whatever we decide? Or is that something in which the council would have to sort of get a majority and direct? How does, because I, I don't want it to go where, are officers going to do whatever we ask them, correct? So they're, if you say no hiring, chief is not going to create a ruckus and do anything. But we also have to be sort of prepared to assist instead of just riding it out. And I'm afraid that if we just keep riding, when does it break?
Well, and that, that is a policy decision. And I mean, basically, to increase revenue, because the police department is funded by discretionary revenue, there's, it would take some sort of a local tax increase. And those generally fall into two categories. A sales tax increase, which is the most common. It's the most common, and many of the cities that that current compares to have sales tax overrides, which has allowed them to staff up. If you look at historically, sales tax increases are the easier of the two options to pass. The other option being some sort of property-based tax, a parcel tax. Those are, a parcel-based tax is much more stable than the sales tax, but it is much harder to pass. But if council wanted us to pursue, serious pursuit and come back with significant options, it would take a council decision to move forward with that. Until, until we get that, you know, we're going to, we're going to make do with the revenue we've got and spend it as, as well as we can and ask, unfortunately, ask as much as we can from our employees. You know, this is, this is certainly a case of, this demonstrates the advantage of quality over quantity, I think, are both of our public safety agencies. But you can only go so far without the numbers. But that's a council decision and it would take a council direction. We could, we could pursue it and provide some significant options if that was council's direction.
Yeah, I, I just worry that our employees, our men and women, regardless of the department, will always perform at an excellent level because they love the city. And so I just worry that there's a point where it breaks. And I think that for you to not be at that level, this significant, especially as something we value so highly with regards to safety, why people choose Clovis, it's something we seriously have to discuss. Or if there's not enough will, then we're going to have to start looking to how to help.
Thank you. If we were to not freeze the amount, the nine, then you would be at a, I think it's like a point nine or point nine one.
Yeah.
Where would that have put you in relationship? Did you do any number running for that particular figure?
I can't, I have it all in Excel. I could, I could put that in and calculate it and see where it put us. But most cities were one or higher, one per capita. So there was very few in the point nines and point eights.
Okay.
It seemed like one and then, like for example, Fresno P D is at one point five. I could, I could create a report and send that to you guys just to show what other local cities are at, just for comparison purposes. But there was a big difference. There's not a lot of agencies below one per thousand.
Yeah. And then how much is one officer? If we were to, for example, learn that maybe our sales tax revenue is not being hit as severely as we think, I'm wondering at what point we can make some adjustments and how much one officer is going to cost us.
I know Jay probably has a roll up.
Hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand. So if we should start to, okay, and Chief Banaski is not going to last. I like that I asked this question. But how much is one firefighter? Does anybody know? It's about the same? And are we freezing positions for firefighters as well in the next budget? Okay, all right. Yeah, these are, these are difficult decisions. I mean, obviously, from my perspective, that, you know, a sales tax increase is kind of a dead on arrival with the citizens of the city of Clovis simply because we did it in our last recession. And it's just a very unfair and difficult argument to make to say, at a time when you're hurting citizens, we want you to give more money. And, you know, then they, they start to look very critically at the amount of money that city employees are making. And it ends up being a very contentious and, you know, feelings get hurt. Because I remember from the last time, feelings got hurt. And so it's, my preferred method is to remember that a rising tide lifts all boats. And to the degree that we can improve our local economy, that's really the best solution. And I know that in the city of Clovis, we have had some great success in improving our jobs to housing balance. I think that this is setback that we are going to, I don't know how long it's going to last, but hopefully, it's not going to be too long and that we will be able to get our numbers back up in a relatively short order. And then we can take a look at where we can allocate some of those funds that come in, hopefully more than what we expected. And since I'm on this topic, I was going to save this question for later, but it seems to be on point at this point. Jay, did we get, what were our, I think our third quarter sales tax figures in yet? Or I think it'd be our first quarter calendar year sales tax figures. That would include the month of March.
Yeah, what we estimated shortly ago, we missed by a couple hundred thousand where we thought we were going to land. As we've been educating council, you know, and we've been revising our estimates downward, we fell short as well. So it's worse than we thought, but again, so many unknowns.
So we were short of two hundred thousand of the figure that was a revised figure down?
Correct.
Okay.
This next quarter, you know, we'll have some definitive answers as we come into the summer months to be able to finalize our June year end and see where we really landed versus what we put into the budget.
Are those sales tax figures a month delayed, a week delayed from the quarter closing?
Well, the state, the way that they, the new and improved system that they have. There is a system, but, you know, we're at sixty, ninety days before we got a good idea of where the previous quarter landed based off of how the money's coming in, how the misreporting is happening and how those additional funds eventually are making it to us. So it really is a rolling kind of average in that they're always missing something, but always giving you something you didn't necessarily know you had. Or you knew it was coming, but you don't have it yet. I wish we could go back to the old way.
All right, thank you to all of you for answering those questions.
Mayor, may I comment, chief, before the chief gets up?
Of course.
I love to watch, like I just talk and then he turns around, it's like magic. I just, I wanted to weigh in. I think I, I'm with council member Monatua. I think, I think we have used, and I agree with you one hundred percent, Drew, that we've only hired the best, but we have used that excuse for about six, seven years. And I just don't think we can keep saying that as the reason why we can continue to fall below the point seven or whatever that number was, you know, if you take out the management staff. So I think that, I think the solution is not a city-driven solution. I think it's a citizen-driven solution. So not, to me, that would be the right way to, to bring it back. I think the timing is not great. The circumstances last time were difficult. I think if it's left to the council to be unanimous or whatever, that's hard. But if citizens want that, I think it needs to be driven by them. So I think it's an offline conversation from this, but I do think we are out of runway on the, we'll just keep hiring great people and we'll wait for the economy to come back because projections are seven years from now. So I just, I don't, I think we're at the end of that runway. And I just wanted to say that publicly. I don't know the solution, but I just, I wanted to weigh in that I think we don't have seven or eight years to get us back to even close to one point zero per capita. So just wanted to add that comment.
Thank you, Lynn.
Okay, fire department, again, this is the other department that is hit heaviest by the discretionary funding or discretionary revenue shortfall. There, there is activity going in the fire department. We are continuing with the design and construction of Fire Station Six in the Loma Vista area. The goal is to have that completed by the end of the current year, with construction starting early next year, calendar year, and with a target opening date of January of twenty twenty-two. We're also going to be, that will be primarily paid for through the development impact fees. There'll probably be some internal borrowing rather than external borrowing. Rather than going out and issuing a bond, we're looking at using the T C P funds, not, not using those funds, but borrowing from those funds to build this fire station. And part of the reason we're looking at an internal borrowing, one is a better rate because those funds don't earn a lot of money. We, they would, we would basically be paying the same rate that they're earning currently as far as an interest rate. So it's a, it's a, it's a better interest rate. But the other big advantage of using internal borrowing rather than external borrowing is when we have a, a, a great building year where we issue a lot of permits, collect a lot more development impact fees, we could make a bigger payment on that, on that loan. Whereas when you issue a bond, you're pretty much locked in to, you know, the same payment every year or whatever the payment structure is. If you, if you see your development growing faster and your impact fees coming in faster, you can't pay it off early. Whereas we could do it with internal borrowing. So we're looking at that. We'll be ordering a new fire station or a new fire engine for that station early next year to have it on site in time to open up the station. Right now, we're maintaining the current status quo in operations, keeping in mind that the, until Station Six gets built and staffed, we have a bit of a hole as far as response times go out in the southeast part of town. I think that was shown in Chief Banaski's report a couple of weeks ago. So that, that will continue. There's no way to, to address that until we get Station Six built and staffed. So the fire department currently has twenty-four firefighters. Now, those are firefighters, that's not the, all of the sworn staff, it doesn't include the other ranks. Three of those physicians are. the sworn staff, it doesn't include the other ranks. Three of those positions are vacant and frozen right now. The, they also have a fire prevention officer position that is vacant and frozen. So they will have four unfunded or vacant positions that we're freezing to meet these current budget constraints right now. We have no Fire Department vehicle replacements in the current budget. They are facing the same problem as the Police Department is with a fleet that continues to age. And because, because we went so many years without replacing equipment 10 years ago, you know, not only are we not catching up, but if, if we're not careful, it's gonna get, just get longer, the average age of the fleet. We do have a CIP project for the Fire Department. It's a relatively, on the scope of things, it's not huge, but it is a significant project to replace the outdated vehicle exhaust extraction systems from the buildings. And that's actually an employee health and safety issue. You need to make sure that when that engine, because the barracks join the apparatus room, you don't want a bunch of diesel fumes seeping into your barracks. So you have to have a updated and current extraction system. So we have a project for that this year. And the Fire Department will be applying for a SAFER grant to try to get some money, you know, for the initial staffing of Fire Station Six. How will we compete with that grant, or whether we get it, is, is up in the air at this point.
I thought we were pretty pessimistic in our ability to get funds from that grant. Is that a fair characterization of our approach? Like, there's some, maybe some scoring that we just don't hit?
It is true on, but where we hit the score in the best for is if you're putting a new unit in service to meet NFPA 1710, which Station Six would be doing, which would be an expansion in order to meet a service delivery deficit and increase the 1710 requirement. So you'd go to the highest scoring for that. When we were trying to use it years ago, or people were trying to use it for retention, or maintain, or small increments, you don't really, you don't score well. They only wanna see it as adding additional companies. So as you look at it, we only add companies like every 15 years. So in between those years, you're not highly competitive. But in this period, we would be highly competitive. The other area that makes it a little bit good right now is, is because of the economic tide, they waived some of the requirements used to be, well, cur, up till right now with COVID, it was 90 the first year, 75 the second year, and 35 or 45 the third year. They've waived that in order, if you're showing an expansion, to be 100%, 100%, 100% for three years up to the max.
Wow.
So our plan is to submit, way the award would work is we'd probably have to bring them on like, four months early, but for three years of free money, figure, we come back to you as policymakers and weigh out the pros and cons of whether or not four or five months early is worth the other, basically, 26 months that would be left of payments.
Right. And because we are needing to staff another unit that's gonna be coming on, we would have expected to spend that money anyway, and plan out for...
Because sometimes the rub against these things is that, okay, great, you've got it for the first three years, but what are you gonna do year four thereafter?
And that's why they wanna see a new company, or for a new station, why you score higher, because they assume that after the funding period, you're not gonna go back and close the station that you just opened.
And that 100% includes the benefits as well?
Up to a federal cap. So we still have a small portion of it, because of, we'd be firefighter positions, and how they'd work out to about 138,000 is what they would do, with firefighters, or about 150. So we'd have to figure out the 12,000 per person.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Chief, I have a couple of questions about, you would wanna hire them three to four months early, is that correct?
Not normally, but the figure, the way the grant cycle works, and they make you have to hire them 180 days from the official award acceptance, and they only give you 60 days to officially accept it, for you to go over to your body and take the acceptance. So depending on how that works out, you're probably looking late September of 21. We're not anticipating opening the station until January of 22. So there would be the overlap or the early period. But to get three months of federally reimbursed, or three years of federally reimbursed salaries, my recommendation would be to take the four or five months early in order to get 30 months left of money from the federal government.
And this is nine positions, correct?
Correct.
So, and the new positions wouldn't all go to the, the fire station. You would hire nine employees, I'm assuming three of those are captains?
Well, we'd promote internally. So the new fire station would be staffed with three captains, three engineers, and three firefighters. But we have a good bench of well-trained employees. So the assumption in all of our past testing, we've had multiple people on promotional exams, internally, our personnel would move up to the cap promotion. So our hiring would be nine firefighters on the bottom on the entry level, and then everyone would move up. And that's what SAFER would pay for.
And, and these new employees would be spread around to all of our fire stations? This not the new one, and, and everybody just kind of bumps up from there, correct?
No, they, through the CFFA, through their contract, actually has a bid system. So they get to pick based on rank and seniority and time and grade, to pick what station they wanna go in, which shift.
Okay. That's all I have.
So the next department that I'll be presenting is Public Utilities Department. This is primarily an enterprise-funded department. You can see the different colors there, representing the different departments. And for some reason, the slide doesn't show everything on the, doesn't show all the colors. So I'll, I'll try to fill in the blanks. The, you see the colors that are shown there. The gray is community sanitation, which is garbage, recycling, green waste, and street sweeping. The green, the lower green band is, I'm looking, I'm using my cheat sheet here, is, uh, street lighting. And, and then the bottom band is the street department. So that shows the, the department, it's a wide variety of services they provide. When you look there, again, this is one of those, when I first saw it, you know, I kinda look at Scott and I go, you know, $6 million? What are we doing? Increase between last year and this year. Keep in mind that 5 million of that is the down payment, the first payment for our firm water supply agreement with FID. The, the breakdown was that the users were gonna pay for 5 million of that total cost, and the rest would be borne by development impact fees. And that $5 million payment is being made next year. So that is the bulk of the expansion of the budget there. It's not, they're not growing the department significantly. They, they are adding one position that, I'll talk about there, one new position in the Water Enterprise Fund. But other than that, it's, it's, it's fairly status quo. As I said, this department is primarily enterprise-funded. The only, the only general fund, portions of this department out there are the street lighting, streets, and park maintenance. And even within those departments, Streets has no discretionary general fund. It's all gas tax. Street lighting is primarily special general funds, non-discretionary. And then the Park Department is, the majority of that budget is LMD, which is a general fund, but it's non-discretionary. So there's actually a relatively small amount of discretionary funding in, in public utilities. So here's the new rate structures that we're proposing. The bond rebate, so we have the bond charge on the bill, and that's to pay for the, the debt service on the sewer system and the sewer plants, that isn't paid through development impact fees. Currently, we are rebating half of it. And going forward, we'll be doing the full rebate. So they will, that knocks $7.30 off of the bill. The sewer charge, we are not implementing the increase. There's a built-in 3% increase. We are requesting council waive that this year and not implement that. Recycling has a 4% rate increase built in. We are recommending that, because that's just a pass-through. That's a contracted service. When it goes up, we have to pay the contractor the 4% more. So we're recommending that increase. As you can see, that's a 32% increase, a 32 cent increase. Street sweeping, there's no change. The refuse rate has another 4% rate increase built into it. We are recommending that this year. Most years in the past, we have either waived that, or implemented a lesser than 4%. This year, we're recommending the full 4%, just to keep the fund whole. The green waste is also a pass-through. That, we want the 4% increase, we're recommending it. And then water has a 3% built-in increase. We are recommending that. The net, if you look at that, is with the waiving of, of the bond charge, the entire bond charge, even with these increases, it's actually, it's actually an, an overall reduction in, in the utility building, billing, because of, even with those, those minor increases in the other charges. So 167 full-time staff out there. Like I said, most of them are funded through the enterprise fund, and the one position being added is an enterprise-funded position.
Luke, when, when does our recycling contract expire? When are we gonna be opening that up again?
2025, I believe.
Twenty seconds. That's probably good news. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a question, please?
Yes, go ahead, Lynn.
Luke, is this the, the department where we would see investments in our Purple Pipe System? And I ask because I was looking at last year's budget preparing for tonight. And one of my notes I wrote was something about investing in that going forward. So is that, is this where those funds would be? And are there any?
The, the Purple Pipe System is really, the expansion of that is driven through development impact fees, not through user charges as much. The user charges for that, and we have relatively few users other than the city. It's primarily the Parks Department within, you know, Caltrans and the hospital are the only user charges. They don't really pay for improvements and expansion of that. That is paid through development impact fees. And it generally goes in with the growth. It, it only expands to new growth areas. If we were to want to push that into the development part of the city, the already developed part of the city, we'd have to find an alternative way to pay for it. And at this time, the, the long-term plan just calls for an expansion of the recycled system, consistent with the expansion of the city, and, and continuing to use that water in those newer parts, but without a way to really push it to the existing city, unless we get a grant. And we're always looking for grant opportunities or something like that. But, you know, it's, it's kinda funny, the attention of, of the state has shifted away from water, even though we're back into another dry year. We had a wet year last year, so this really isn't a critical drought yet. You know, a few years ago, when we had three very dry years, there was a lot of attention, a lot of potential funding opportunities, and, and looking at expanding recycled water systems. Once, once it starts raining, everybody forgets we live in a dry area, and, and the attention focused on housing, and now it's focused on the COVID. And, and based on what we're seeing in Sacramento, as, as the state starts to reopen, and, and the COVID, hope that, you know, as we move past or through the COVID situation, we're a long way from there, being done with it, but they're already starting to look more at the housing issue. So I don't anticipate seeing a lot of grant opportunities for expansion of our recycled water system.
But as we continue to grow in some of the developments, the Purple Pipe infrastructure, when it's feasible, is part of the development requirements?
Yes, it is. They, they, it is being expanded throughout Loma Vista. And we are working on the plan to connect Heritage Grove. There's the segment along Shepherd Avenue to connect to Heritage Grove. And that's, that's not gonna be immediate, but there are plans for how to do that. So then at Heritage Grove, some of the landscaping may, you know, public landscaping will line, wind up using potable water until some of those big connections are made. But that is a relatively few number of years. And then we'll have Purple Pipe up there, and be able to serve the public landscaping up there with the recycled water as well.
All right. Thanks, Luke.
I'm in agreement with Lynn. I'm a big Purple Pipe fan. So whatever we can do to recycle water and, and exchange it for potable water, we need to do that whenever we can. Bob?
Thank you. Okay. So I wanna spend a few minutes on the bond charge rebate. So the bond that we're talking about, that was issued, was for the wastewater treatment facility. Is that correct?
For the wastewater treatment facility itself, and some of the collection infrastructure, some of the large trunk lines as well, I think were included in the bonding.
Not the Fowler trunk line?
No.
Okay. This would be the newer trunk lines associated with the wastewater treatment facility? Is that right?
I believe so. And, and the pump...
Oh, Leonard and Temperance is also associated with it. Okay.
Yeah. And then the pump station that, to pump it to the treatment plant. So...
Okay. And so historically, what has happened is that we've required development to pay its own way. And what they have done is that we would charge a development fee in order to pay for some of this capital infrastructure associated with it. And then, what we realized during the last recession, and maybe subsequent to that, there have been years in which our expectations for the amount of homes that were being built was not being met. And I thought that that figure was based on a 750, 750 new single-family residential units. Is that right?
Roughly, yeah. It, it's approximately that.
So there have been some occasions when we've been able to not meet that 750 single-family residential unit per year pace. And as a result, the amount that we have guaranteed our bondholders, that we would keep in a covenant, or a reserve, if you will, was not being met. And so we started to charge our users for an additional amount, which is, which we're calling the bond charge for our citizens. And that, that periodically has been, I can't think of another word right now, but afflicted against our citizens, when normally it would not have been, because the developers would have been paying for that capital improvement. So when we fell short of that, we started to charge our citizens the amount, which could be up to $14.60.
Correct.
And then we started to get a little bit closer to meeting our, I'll call it quota of 750-ish, single-family residential units. And so we said, okay, well, we're not gonna have to have you pay the full 1460. You only have to pay $7.30, so half of that. And now we're at the point where our single-family residential development is getting to the point where we don't even have to charge them at all. At least our expectation is we're not gonna have to charge them at all for that bond charge. At least that's our expectations for the next fiscal year.
Correct.
Okay. Now, when we say rebate, what that means to me is that we're kind of giving people back money that they've contributed to an expenditure. And so I just wanna be clear that when we're saying rebate, this isn't, we're not giving money back to the citizens that they've already put in, that the developer should have paid for. We're just saying, you don't have to pay for it this next fiscal year. Is that right?
Correct. For this coming fiscal year, it, 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 it's not intentionally confusing. It has to do with Prop 218 and the rules. They're charged the, the 1460 on their bi-monthly bill, and then they're rebated the 1460. So it's really a net zero. Now, there was, a few years ago, we did actually rebate, I wanna say, instead of seven, so 730 a month is the charge, and the rebate was 1095. So it was, we're giving you back the full 730 plus half again for what you paid last year.
Okay.
So, so we have done that when the fund has the capability. And the, the number of units, the whole modeling was done based on 750 units per year. But something else that changed, that, that makes this, I mean, if that was still the only factor, then anytime we're over 750, we'd be able to rebate this. The, the other factor that changed was we did all of our studies for our sewage treatment plants in the mid 2000s, 2005, built the plant, opened up, went online in 2009. Well, what we're seeing is because of the push for water savings, each resident is pursuing, is producing a lot less sewage than our modeling from 2005 showed. So we can only charge the development impact fee based on the actual impact. So realistically, each house isn't producing one 750th of the sewage. It's maybe producing one one thousandth of the sewage, you know, on an annual basis. So that has led us to having to impose or not rebate the money on years, even when we do make the 750 units.
So I just wanted to make sure that we are clear, that we are not... So I just wanted to make sure that we are clear that we are not doing in the next fiscal year what we had done previously, which is giving them even some money back that they've contributed to.
No.
All right. And are we still able to keep track of how much money has been given in the past?
Absolutely. That is booked on the books as a loan. And because of, because of the houses using less of the capacity than was forecast, the way it will work out is eventually, at some point, we will have paid for the bonds, the debt service, but we'll still have capacity to offer to new houses. And then all of that development impact fee will be paid back to the users through a rebate above and beyond. So it would eventually result in a rate reduction, and that is on the books and finance as a loan.
Okay. And then our amount of sewage being pulled from the home on a, you know, per-house basis is a difficult number to establish because we don't have like a meter on the sewage that is leaving the home. But what we seem to measure it by is the amount of water that is being delivered to the home, believing that the amount of water proportionally is going to also result in the amount of sewage. Is that fair?
That's a very rough estimate. The sewer charge itself is a flat fee. It doesn't change based, like the water fee, you know, your monthly water bill changes with usage. The sewer fee is a flat fee. We use that, we use those numbers for estimating. We also did a fairly significant measuring exercise when we were preparing the updates to our sewer master plan. Our consultant placed meters in various collectors, and we collected a lot of good data, this would have been 2013, 1415, as to what kind of flows we were seeing from different types of, everything from different densities of residential to commercial, different types of commercial. So we did get a very valuable source of data there, and that's when we saw, wow, these numbers are much, much lower than what they were in 2005, because we had done the same thing the first time around. And we saw that they went down, and then because of the requirement for NEXUS, this last time we did the, based on the utility master plans and the associated fees, the per-unit fee for a house actually went down. So that's why it takes more than 750 to get us to break even at this point.
I see. So when you brought up the fact that there was a decrease in sewer usage, it was a result of kind of some of that monitoring that we did that you've just referenced and realized that people were not, as we made that NEXUS or that connection, we, they were not using the, or we were not drawing as much sewage per residence as we thought.
Yeah.
And so then we had to make our adjustment because we want to make sure that, because it's an enterprise fund, that we have that nexus between what we're charging and, you know, what somebody is utilizing that service for.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That was really helpful.
Okay. The Community Investment Program, and I've got it shown here, is page 187, in case you want to flip to it in the book. It's really not 187, it's a separate section, C1. I just put 187 because it's right after 186, and if I threw a C1 up there, you'd go, ah, where the heck's that? So this is the Community Investment Program, and these are our capital improvements. This is managed by the Planning and Development Services. In the past, we've included this as part of the Planning and Development Services budget. But what I tried to do this year is kind of, instead of go through it by department and alphabetical order, go through it kind of in order of how it comes up in the budget. So this is a Planning and Development Services program. They manage this. It's a very significant program. You can see that there's 50, just about $59 million in projects planned. There's a breakdown as to whether they're government facilities, sewer, parks, et cetera. The pie chart is helpful. You can see that, you know, the, more than 50% of the projects we do are streets projects, and we'll talk on the highlights of that, not only, you know, everything from a relatively small widening project to a signal to some very big projects. And then the others are, again, a couple of big ones are the water and sewer enterprise-driven projects for replacement or expansion or upgrades, relatively small refus. And then the yellow is the general fund, and then the Parks is pended out of the Parks Fund. So some of the highlights of the projects, we are continuing with the design of the Loma Vista Village Green. I think you, I think council has seen some of the concept drawings of that. We are continuing with the design and construction, moving toward the construction of the widening of Shaw Avenue from DeWolff to McCall Avenue. That'll be six lanes all the way out to McCall. That is a Measure C-funded project, similar to the Willow widening project that we just completed. Design and construct the widening from Herndon, from Temperance to Locan, again, another Measure C regional transportation-funded project. Multiple local and arterial street improvements. And then also included in here is the construction of Fire Station 6 and the construction of Landmark Square Project. So going forward, as we stated, and I wish we had a great crystal ball and could tell exactly what was going to happen with this COVID thing. We don't. This is our best estimate, and, but it's going to take, we're going to have to be monitoring the changes. And as often as we can get data, we will adjust our plans accordingly and maybe coming back to council with budget revisions. You know, hopefully, yeah, hopefully, I can come back and say, you know, chief, you get to fill three more positions. But the general fund and the discretionary spending is going to be, it was already constrained, you know, even going, three months ago, well, for the three years that I've been city manager, it's been constrained. So it was already constrained, but we seemed like, okay, we had kind of tightened the belt as much as we were going to be able to, and now it was going to be at least, you know, being able to stay even. This COVID thing has caused us to tighten the belt even further, and going forward, we're just going to have to monitor it closely. If things go better than we're projecting, then we would certainly take advantage of that to start filling some of those frozen positions. If things go worse, then we'll be coming back with some very unpleasant options. So the recommendation is for council to approve the resolution adopting the budget, the five-year capital improvement program, and the successor agency information that's included in the budget. And that's it for my presentation, and I'm open for questions if you have any other specific questions with the departments. We have the department heads online.
Thank you, Luke. Any questions for staff? Bob?
Just one more. Thank you. So Luke, the reason it was constrained before is because of the, as I recall, the CalPERS contributions that we were going to be making to the state were modified by the state. And if we didn't have to make those modifications and actually make more contributions to the state CalPERS, then we would have been in a position where we could have actually made some, we could have gained some ground in our general fund expenditures, whether it was hiring more police officers, more firefighters, making, you know, more contributions to our Parks and Rec and our senior center. Is that right?
Yes. CalPERS changed their actuarial assumptions in, it was either 2015 or early 2016, and then on December 16th of 2016, they made a very significant change to their projected discount rate, which is their expected earnings. They ratcheted that down, which means that the employer contributions have to go up, and they have been going up because of the unfunded liability, and that was coming out of some very bad years anyway for them. So that is a significant cost, I think, is what was shown on a slide earlier, just this current year. Our PERS costs are going to go up 1 point.
I thought it was 14%.
14%, but I think it's like 1.8 million dollars.
Oh, it's far as $100,000.
So, yeah, so that was a very significant constraining on our discretionary funding.
So, okay, thank you. So the, if we didn't have that adjustment to how much we had to contribute to retirement, we would have had 1.9 million in our general fund that we could work with. And, you know, if each police officer or firefighter costs, you know, 150 to 200,000, then we could have brought on another 10. I don't know how that would be split.
Yeah. Roughly, yes. And, but to put things in perspective, so I became city manager like two weeks after PERS made that decision, and at the time, the police department was funded for 106 sworn officers. And when we went through that year's budget exercise, I had to tell the police chief, and he was planning on getting 109, getting three more the following July 1, and we kind of projected out three new officers every year to keep up with growth, so it was going to be steady. I came on and said, well, not only are you not getting your three more in July, you can only fill 100 of them now.
Mm-hmm.
And it was kind of, you know, it was a shock to the system. Again, our, I can't say enough about the abilities and attitude of the departments. They said, well, okay, that's what it is. We're going to, you know, do the best we can. We've done a great job. And we started adding three a year, three a year, got them up to 109 last July, and we're back to 100. So it's, 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 it seems to ratchet down a lot faster than it ratchets back up, or, you know, it drops and then it's a slow glide. But if you look at the staffing ratio over time, what you will see is that we really never recover.
Okay. And then, well, I said I would only have one more question, and I've already used two of them. But I will say this, and I know we still have to open it up to the public, but I'll just simply say, I really appreciate your work and Jay's work and all the department heads' work. This has been a very difficult last few months, and has to be pretty tiring and draining. And then to have the additional, you know, I think with Chief Fleming having to address what has happened over the last week, it's just really amazing, the work that you have all been able to do. So I appreciate it very much. My only hope is that, and I think maybe Lynn alluded to this earlier, you know, for another seven years, can we keep saying, you know, we're just hiring good people? And I think that the seven-year reference was perhaps to, when it is that we expect CalPERS contributions to maybe plateau. And is that about right? Are we still that far off?
Yeah, they will plateau in six or seven years, they'll start coming down in 11 or 12 years.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Well, okay, so that was, that was begin, the projections from six months ago. If the, if PERS does not receive a 7% return on their investment in the current fiscal year, then what we will see is another increase beginning two years from now to make up for that.
Lynn, did you have something?
I did, if Bob was finished, or when Bob was finished.
Bob's done.
Oh, okay. Bob, yes, it was referenced to PERS, and it's also referenced to just some of the economists' forecasts who also don't know, for the record, how long it will take for this economy to recover. So it's the current number that I've heard more than once, so I've decided that might be, somebody might think that's, that's the recovery period, and look how long it took us to recover from the 2008, 9, 10 event, and maybe just now, and to Luke's point earlier, we never recover back where we started, it's always sort of lower. So anyway, I just think the cycle is, it's just, it's here to stay. I just had, I think, three questions, Luke, or not particularly significant. I do want to echo Bob for your work. I appreciated the presentation tonight. I thought it was really effective, and thank you to the department heads for being on standby and those that were in the room. One question for John Holt, are the election costs, what are the predictions on the elections' cost, given that Fresno County has gone to fundamentally an all-mail-in system with some polling designated locations? I don't know how many Clovis would have in our own election, but did we see any savings in that shift?
No, they continue to go up. For the March 2021 election, I think we estimated a cost of $225,000. When we go to the November 2022, it will go down significantly because we're sharing those costs with everybody that's going to be on the ballot. But a standalone election is the single most expensive.
Von and I would be happy to call it off, but that's just an offer I'll make on behalf of my colleague.
Understood.
Not really kidding, but okay, just kidding. Second question, a really small question for Luke, I think you can answer this. Citizens Academy remaining somewhere?
That's going to be dependent on what happens with the social distancing. Right now, that's on hold. You know, we finally got that going, and we got one in a row, one year in a row. We were really disappointed. This year, we already had planned and worked with Clovis Unified for a special academy for the educators, and then we were planning the Citizens Academy that would have been occurring. We were going to do it this time of year so that we had nice, long, you know, daylight for the tour, and that's on hold for now. As soon as we think we could figure out a way to do it and maintain social distancing, we would implement it again, but I don't know how we'd do it, even with the buses. We're starting to look at ways we could do it virtually, but I think that will be a bit of a letdown. We had a lot of positive feedback from the in-person academy and the in-person tour, and to try to do something virtual with kind of a self-guided tour that you can do in your own car may be a bigger letdown than it's worth. So we're weighing those options, but we definitely want to bring it back as soon as we can.
I say that because I do think now more than ever, we need to find ways to engage our citizens, and for probably the sixth year in a row, I do think we've got to engage citizens, if not in a plan for our city, at least in a budget discussion, because I just don't think the five of us can be out there saying it's this or it's that. People need to weigh in and say what matters to them, and I think we each talk to our own constituencies, but we don't ever hear them all in the same space. So when there's a way to do that, I would continue to advocate for that. I might be the only advocator for that, but I just think we, the less we engage people, the more struggles I think we're going to have going forward. And my final question is, any indication, I don't think Congress has made a decision, but any signs about any local government relief in some round of federal funding? And I know that could come up and do a COVID item, but it's relative to the budget. Any updates on that?
No, the House passed one. It hasn't gone further yet. There's a lot of back and forth on that. If that comes, if that would come through, if the House's version was passed, that would certainly be very helpful to us, but we're not counting on this. Again, the way we presented the budget and prepared the budget here is we're not counting on that, we're not counting on the SAFER grant. If we get those, then great. We will come back and say, hey, we have this money, and this is, these are the constraints that we can relax, but at this point, we're not counting on it. There's also some indication of, the League of Cities is pressing the state to give all cities some of the CARES Act money that the state got, but that's not a huge amount of money. You know, if that one, that one breaks down, I think they want to put, right now, the proposal in the governor's budget, I think, is it's based on per capita, with the bottom being like $3,000 per city, based on your capita, and for a city the size of Clovis, it would be more. And while I'm not going to, you know, turn my nose up at a few tens of thousands of dollars, it's not going to make a significant difference in a $70 million discretionary revenue budget. So it's really depending on the feds, and we're just watching that and hopeful, but no guarantees at this point.
Thanks, Luke. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any, Luke, excuse me, Bob, just wanted to thank the staff for sending us the paper report. I thought the organization, the CIP, was very well done this year. I think putting it in that section and the way it was organized, Luke, I liked that. And in the intro, I may have missed it in the past, but going over the financial policies and listing those out, I think gave us sort of a framework of, this is how we're looking at our budget, at least for us as the decision-makers here. In the future, John, for the budget, if it's possible, if you can make a tab so that way we can actually tab the electronic version, the paper, I know it's harder, but, you know, like how you do it on our agenda, six, and it goes all the way to six. I don't know if it can do that, but if you can, that would be very helpful.
We can.
Okay. And then the budget at that glance, I think this is, I always like this one because it talks about the good things that we've done in addition to sort of the, how the budget is going. Can we have that? So is this something we can share?
Yes.
On social media or to people so that they have an idea what we're?
Yes, that's a public document and it's probably up on our webpage generally here.
It is.
And we will share it through social media and everything, once the budget's adopted.
And then my last question is with regards to, in the executive summary, Luke, on page three, right before the other funds paragraph, the last sentence in the paragraph before that says, "It is likely that within the next year, the city will need to critically evaluate what we define as essential city services and begin to make what could be tough decisions on certain services and at what level they are provided." And so my question, if we are providing, um, our emergency funds already to help, we still need that discussion. I thought it was already to make it where we're keeping what we have. So that's the first question. And then if it isn't, then when do you anticipate having a review where we actually do what you're saying, what we're seeing here, when that discussion or that exercise will happen?
So that's going to depend on, on, first of all, what, what the economy does. Does, you know, again, I don't want to be flipping them. Is it a V-shaped recovery, a W recovery, a U, a swoosh, whatever it is. Um, but the, the question will honestly probably come to a head when we have the design and bids for the senior center. Because, um, that, that's, at that point, that, that's going to be, if, if things are bad, I, to be completely honest, um, you know, that's, that's discretionary funding that could be used elsewhere and that will be when that discussion is had. It'd be, it'd be in the fall, late fall, um, early winter, uh, when we, when we have that bid number in to see what that number is. You know, on the plus side, um, if we got a bunch of federal funds and if we, uh, if the economy is showing signs of a relatively robust recovery, um, it, it might be perfect timing because we could be in an environment where, um, it, it, a great bidding environment and we've got some great bids. Um, it, on, on the flip side, if, if for some reason we don't get good bids in, we don't get federal funds, and the economy is looking like it's a prolonged, you know, retraction, it's going to be a decision that, that the council has to make is do we move forward with that, um, that new facility? So that, that will probably be when, when we start to have that discussion. We'll have a little bit more of an idea of what's happening with the economy coming out of, uh, of, of this impact of COVID. And we'll see what's, what's happening with all the funds at that point.
Does it also mean potential cutting of, of certain services equalling staff? Do I, do I breathe that in what we mean by defining essential city services? Or that's out of the question because that's what the emergency reserves are for? Anyway, we're, we're going to save? Or is that on the table potentially as well?
Um, it, it, it could be. I, I mean, I can't, I can't, I can't guarantee that there won't be additional cuts down the road. Um, you know, we're certainly hoping, hoping there aren't. Um, I, I know it is very hard on the police department, but had we not had nine sworn positions vacant, we would be looking at cut, we would be looking at layoffs right now. Um, the only reason we are not now, and the only reason we can come up with, um, you know, make up for eighty percent of the, the expected shortfall through savings is because of those vacancies. Um, uh, but if, if it turns out that it's going to be a, a twelve million dollar revenue shortfall instead of a, a ten, then we have to make the decision, okay, do we spend four million of the reserves? Or do we, do we make cuts and only spend two million or somewhere in between? So those are the decisions that we're going to have to make. At this point now, we just don't have the information to really, I think what we presented is fairly prudent. And really what it is, is it is, we have cut as much as we can without layoffs, without going back to employees to renegotiate contract provisions, without furloughs and stuff like that. Um, and, and, and I think that is a, a prudent position to take because, you know, like I said, if, if, if the outcome turns out better than we're projecting, great. We get to, we get to, um, uh, start filling some of these vacant positions. If it's worse and we hadn't done this, then you have to cut twice as much because you've missed out on half a years of that cut. Um, so I, I think this is prudent, uh, and hopefully we get through it. And, uh, hopefully we get some federal aid, um, coming down the, the pipeline to all cities. Uh, you know, the, the first CARES package include, included federal aid for larger cities. Um, we didn't qualify for that. Uh, so, uh, all of that will change. We'll be looking at it. Um, again, a lot of cities that, there are cities that are saying that they're so, they're so uncertain about what's going on that they're not even doing their budget. They're saying, you know, we're just gonna, we're gonna go month to month until we know what's going to happen. Um, we, we felt, staff felt that it would be more, more appropriate for us to adopt a budget based on our best estimate and then adjust going forward rather than just kind of running blind. So.
Thank you, Lynn. Jose?
I, I do want to thank you, Luke and Jay for the presentation tonight and also the budget. And, you know, we're gonna, all, all staff members of Clovis will need to tighten their belts, but the whole community is doing that. We're all doing that. This, this, this pandemic just really hit us hard, hit our economy horrendously. And so it's great that you were able to find tools to meet the challenges as far as the city's concerned, where there weren't layoffs, where we, we could do some things that at least keep our workforce as, you know, as best as we could. Um, I want to commend also Andy out there because, you know, we cite examples, uh, Bob Boylan shared an example of the gratitude the business community felt for what he's done prior to us opening up Clovis. And I, I think, uh, he's a great example of what we all, every one of us here in Clovis, every one of us who has anything to do with Clovis has to become, we have to be, uh, an advocate for Clovis because I think Bob is right. Either, there's, there's two alternatives. Either go out later on for some kind of, of tax override or, or entice, entice the entrepreneur that will look for an opportunity to come to Clovis and, and start investing their hard-earned money in our city so they can, so we can start up our economy like nobody else. This is the time to do it. There's two alternatives. Bring new money to Clovis or when people are down, try to extract more taxes. Last time we tried that, it didn't work. So even the school district that always passes their bonds was unable to pass a bond. So, so each one of us, I think, because of these hard times, we need to, uh, become the best advocates for our cities, entice good business, good industries to come here and, and work hard. So that's my challenge to everybody on these hard times. That, there's a couple of ways to, to build up the coffers of our treasury. And, uh, we need to find solutions. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff from council? Seeing none, I'll open this to the public. Any member of the public in the chambers wish to address council on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, do we have any emails regarding this?
No, we do not.
Did we have anything on the web, Lily?
None.
Okay. I will close public comment and come back to the council for discussion or action.
I'll, I move that we approve the resolution adopting, uh, the City of Clovis Annual Budget Five-Year Capital Improvement Program and Information Regarding, well, the Clovis Successor Agency.
We have a motion in a second?
Councilor Ashbeck.
Aye.
Councilor Flores.
Aye.
Councilor Wanan.
Aye.
Councilor Whalen.
Aye.
Mayor Besseger.
Aye. Item six, consider request to initiate an ordinance amendment to amend Title Six of the Clovis Municipal Code to allow backyard chickens. George Rodriguez is our presenter.
Can we comment, should we, George?
Yes, you can.
Too soon.
Yes, you can. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, on May eleventh, twenty twenty, during council comments, Councilmember Whalen requested staff evaluate amending the city's current ordinance banning chickens in the city limits. Animal Services Division has prepared a brief report on this topic for council discussion and consideration. Staff will be looking for a direction from council to return with an ordinance amendment that would allow backyard chickens using certain constraints. Little background, uh, the request to allow backyard chickens has come to staff and council a few times over the past ten years. Historically, the Animal Services Division has recommended against allowance due to noise, odor, and increased calls for service. Many urban cities in California currently allow backyard chickens. Some cities in the central San Joaquin Valley already allow, uh, the chickens, including Woodlake, Lindsay, Farmersville, Madera, and Madera. Most cities either prohibit them or have limited exceptions, including Fresno, Clovis, Selma, Reedley, Tulare, Hanford, and Lemoore. In twenty fifteen, the Visalia City Council denied a request to amend the ordinance to allow backyard chickens with a three-two vote. Most concerns raised regard odor, noise, and not requiring chicken coops. Advocates for background chickens generally cite the following positive benefits. Chickens produce eggs for human consumption. They create natural fertilizer for the yard. They help maintain weeds and pests. They make good pets. And they are relatively easy to maintain. Some of the drawbacks to having backyard chickens include noise, bad odor from chicken droppings, complaints from neighbors, disease, and the disposal of dead chickens. Cities that allow backyard chickens seem to allow from three to six chickens in a residential area, do not allow roosters, and require some type of enclosure for shelter. If council directs staff to move forward to amend the ordinance and allow backyard chickens, staff will evaluate ways to successfully allow backyard chickens in single-family residential neighborhoods, limiting the number, minimum lot size, cleanliness, safety of animals, um, and not allowing roosters. Uh, this concludes my report. And Betty Cochran, the Animal Services Supervisor, and I are open for questions.
Jose?
Now that the state is allowing for ancillary residential dwellings, would that then take away from the lot size? Or do we go by the principle residence S to determine the lot size?
That would be what we would evaluate if we move forward with this ordinance change. We, we're, we're not proposing a specific ordinance or a criteria yet, but we would have to look at that. And, and we would have to make sure we don't, uh, allow chickens on a lot that may have been big enough but is now built with, you know, multiple accessory dwelling units. So we'd have to evaluate all of those impacts and then come back with a recommended proposal.
Because my principle would be that if it once was, it should be.
Lynn, do you have anything?
Um, I, I think, um, so I'm not in support of this. I think I've probably always been on the no side of it. I think, I guess fundamentally, I feel like it's, um, paired with COVID nineteen and the budget to be talking about backyard chickens doesn't quite resonate with me. And I am opposed to anything that remotely has a chance of increasing calls for service. We just got through saying we have seventy police officers. And I think, given the size of our lots in our community that have gotten smaller and smaller, I understand one of the criteria might be lot size, but I, I just can't see my way through this. So, um, I'm not in favor of this. There's really nothing I want staff to spend ten more minutes on because I don't think they have ten minutes to invest in this, in these times. So that's my opinion on that.
Thank you, Lynn. Any other questions for staff? Bob?
Uh, yeah. So I have a question related to, um, if we were to go forward, uh, the placement of, um, this ordinance. I guess my view, uh, would be that, um, when it comes to municipal code section six point one, point three zero one, which talks about restriction on number of household pets, is probably the, the location where I would, I think we would want to place this. Um, and it doesn't take long to review, but just, uh, for the benefit of the council and maybe those who are listening, it says, "The maximum number of household pets allowed in a household or on any premises shall be as follows: A, three dogs; B, three cats; C, two Vietnamese pot-bellied pigs; D, three reptiles." And it says here, "The combined maximum number of dogs, cats, and pot-bellied pigs shall be three animals." So three of that combination. And then it says, "The combined maximum number of all household pets other than dogs, cats, pot-bellied pigs, and reptiles shall be, um, three animals." So, uh, then it says in G, "The combined total of all household pets shall be six animals." Um, so I guess I'm not understanding the language very well in that, in that section, um, the three and the six and, uh, how, how that works.
Well, I, I can go, only go from memory because, of course, I've got my laptop. But, um, I think it was cats and dogs is three. And then, you know, you can have all these other little animals, the lizards and things, and maximum is six. I think that's, that's what we're thinking of. I think backyard, backyard chickens wouldn't necessarily fall under household pets unless you wanted to throw it in there as part of the maximum. I think there'd be a standalone section. There'd be the exception of the farm animals. We look at farm animals. We'd say, except you could have so many hens.
Yeah.
I think that's where we would put it. I don't think we'd mess with the household pets necessarily, uh, unless you wanted to include it in the maximum.
Well, that's what I was thinking. Yeah, because if, if at some point you've got a combined total of six pets on your property and then you have three backyard chickens, I'm thinking that might be a little too much. Um, but if we did instead insert it into, uh, this idea of household pets, though I understand that these are laying hens and they, you know, they have a, I think some people consider them to be pets, but they have a, a benefit of, um, providing protein for the family, um, that, that would be a way to reduce the concerns of some who say, well, there's going to be additional calls, right? So if there's, um, I think people probably have different views of this. I am of the opinion that dogs are louder and smellier than a backyard chicken. Um, I'm of the opinion that, um, cats, uh, at least the cats in my neighborhood are louder, particularly in the middle of the night, um, when they decide to go at each other. Um, and, uh, so I think that we probably ought to say, all right, if you want to have backyard chickens, fine, but you're going to be limited to the three or the six, depending on how you read that code section. Um, and if you have one dog, then you can only have two backyard chickens. Um, you know.
The way I'm thinking is, we've come up with a number for chickens after we do the research, but never to exceed that maximum of six.
Yeah, or three, whatever it is.
Okay.
Yeah, because I'm really.
We'll figure it out. I know what you're saying.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So, uh, that would, that would be my view. And, and as far as, um, opinions on it, I, I think the opinions expressed, um, in the comments that we received today, um, are, uh, you know, really all of the, um, comments, I think, that cause it to make sense for us in our community to allow for these backyard chickens or laying hens. Thank you.
Bob? And can, can we put in there with regards to having to own them, a, a permit to be able to have? So that way at least, like, however many, but at least this home is permitted to have chickens. And whether they have one or the max, at least we know the home is valid and also produces some revenues in case there are calls for service, something like that. Because dogs are, are, have licenses, right? So they, we, we get some revenue from the dogs. I don't know how many people license their cats, but.
That's something that, uh, certainly we would, we would take a look at. Um, and we would like to have the opportunity to evaluate that, to see what other cities are doing and determine, one, is it really a revenue generator? Um, in our experience with dog licensing, um, unfortunately, not many people license their, their dogs. Um, so, um, want to find out if that's the same, that would be true for chickens with, regarding permitting. Um, um, so there are some, I know there are some cities who don't, who do require permitting, and then there are some cities that do not. So, uh, we'd like the opportunity to come back and, and present that to you.
And also in, I'm, I'm for it, just so you know. So in the report back, if, if you can give some reference as to the calls for service for the current pets, so that would be kind of, okay, the pets that most everyone has, you know, our calls for service are this much. It's extending this amount of, um, staff time.
Sure.
Potentially other cities, see how much their calls are.
I can share some of that now with, about Clovis. I mean, we receive about five thousand calls for service, uh, per year. Uh, we have two animal control officers assigned to the field. Um, they, um, cannot cover all of those calls for service. They cannot cover all of those calls for service, and when they are not able to, that rolls back over to our police officers and CSOs.
Jose? And can we check on why cities chose three to six chickens? Because is there some scientific, you know, something they quantify? Why three? Is it the number of members in the household? You know, because to Bob's point, they produce protein, they produce eggs, and they might be dinner down the road. So is there a reason why you would maybe want to have three, depending on the size of your family, or six, depending on your size of the family, or depending on the size of your lot? So could that be a scale? Like, if you have a large lot, there's still some here in Clovis, because you have more than if you had a smaller lot? And not limited to three, maybe just two? Something scalable based on, you know, verifiable empirical metrics. That way we can, we can, we say, if you are this big and have this many children, this is what you can have. Another thing, to Lynn's point, I mean, you know, the wet markets and all that, check with the health department as far as, and if we're going to license them, like Wong might want, what are the concerns we might have with, you know, avian influenza or other issues that birds might bring, and how they interact with the other birds that fly around? And, you know, how safe are they to have that close to the neighborhoods? And are there laws that we can then have to regulate if there is some kind of weird something that comes to our neighbor, to our community where we can destroy them? Because I know the agriculture, they do have those things where if a certain pandemic arises and it's taking out some animals, some farm animals, the authorities can come in and just euthanize those animals. So we should have that ability, too. And that's why maybe knowing where they're at is important, if, you know, the worst-case scenario in that sense happens. Just.
Drew, can I comment and ask another question?
You certainly may.
I implore you all to just think about, we're talking about calls for service and noise and all of that, I mean, I just, I can't quite get my mind around imposing that on our staff and our citizens right now. Bob, we got two letters in support of this, and I'm opposed, so we're almost at a tie. So I'm not, I don't feel like it's an overwhelming demand. I guess what I want to say, I want to ask the chief, or George, maybe you know, let's just talk about calls for service. One of Drew and my favorite stories caused him to retire was a neighborhood dispute around cats and rats, or I can't remember what it is. So I imagine some percent of the calls for service for PD are animal-related. So George, how do animal-related calls compare, or maybe the chief can weigh in, in terms of their, is it the number-one call for service, number-three call for service? And we're going to add more potential for calls for service to 70 officers for backyard chickens? So what is that number? What's the priority or the ranking of calls for service for a PD?
Yeah, calls for service for animals is one of the higher calls for service in our community. Generally, depending on what beat you're looking at, it can rank anywhere from one to three or four. So there's a high volume of calls for service that are related to animals.
Have those responded to, George? I'm sorry, Lynn, go ahead.
Well, I just, I guess-
I had a follow-up on your question.
I've made my point, I know it, I know I'll, I don't know how I ended up being the outlier in this council for the last three months, but I just, I cannot get my mind around permitting, setting that up, having staff manage it, people don't renew their permits, chickens are noisy, you have a 2,500 square foot lot with a three-foot setback, and we're going to say you can have chickens. I just cannot, in today's economy, I just can't get my mind, or today's environment, I cannot get there. But anyway, I've already made my point, and I'm sure I will lose this one as well. So Bob, yes, follow-up question.
Lynn, with, like most things, you've got to be present to win.
Thank you. I don't find that funny at all. I am not present for my health, and I do not find that funny at all. So you might want to rethink that humor, but go ahead, Bob.
Thank you. So the respond, the responses to the calls related to animals, those are being responded to by animal control officers and patrol officers?
Yeah, so our animal control officers are generally on from 8 o'clock until 5, 6 o'clock, and then after that, police officers and community service officers will respond to calls for service.
Okay.
All right. That was it? Thank you.
In the event that this, that we vote to look at this, I would want to prohibit any commercial operation. I mean, obviously, if somebody wants to give eggs to their neighbor or their brother and sister, that's fine, but I, we certainly don't want a situation. My wife, we go to a chicken farm on Armstrong, just south of the Gold Canal, and they have an old, probably a 78-acre ranch kind of house, which is fine, but we certainly don't want to, and to Lynn's point, cause calls for service where people are complaining that, hey, the people next to me are running a poultry operation, and I don't like it. Any other questions for staff? We'll open this to the public. Any member of the public wish to address the council on this item? Yes, ma'am, please.
My name is Sharon. I have been a resident in Clovis for over 20 years, and I'm here as an advocate to speak on the amendment for the allowance of backyard chickens. I understand the Animal Services Department has recommended against the allowance due to odor, noise, and calls for service, although I strongly believe the benefits far outweigh the concerns when implementing limitations for backyard chickens. I have never received any complaints from the neighbors in the 20-plus years as a Clovis resident. For example, requiring chicken coops and, of course, limiting the quantity, as Joe and others have suggested, as allowed, as those cities that do allow for backyard chickens, in addition to maintaining cleanliness, safety of animals, and of course, not allowing roosters, the noise complaint is valid, and so is the safety concerns of not only the residents, but the neighbors as well. Such benefits include access, savings, and safety for families struggling during this pandemic. We are all aware and know what COVID-19 has caused and continues to cause amongst all of us, so the last thing we would want to do is allow for any type of animal to contribute Access, savings, and safety for families struggling during this pandemic and current societal crisis. I have a niece who stays with me and is diagnosed with adrenal deficiency and also blindness. This can result in a life-threatening situation at any point. Having chickens to produce eggs for human consumption gives me peace of mind knowing the source of production. It allows me to stay home with her versus leaving her with a babysitter to simply go buy eggs. Eggs are the only thing she can eat for breakfast, and she loves them. She's a high-risk individual, nine years old, and I must be extremely cautious during these times, as you guys are, when leaving to pick up her medicine or get food, et cetera. As we know, many urban cities allow backyard chickens, and during the pandemic, I think an amendment to Title VI to allow backyard chickens can substantially assist and support families like mine. Of course, we will not kill chickens in the backyard to eat them. We understand the complications of unsanitary environments. We will follow all laws as required, dispose of them appropriately as required by law, and do everything we can do to maintain the peace and cleanliness for not only ourselves, but for those around us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other member of the public in the chambers wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, are we going to read the ones that came in, or these just submitted?
They're just submitted. So we have two letters of support for moving forward with this proposal.
Thank you. Do we have any on the web?
Yes, we have one, Jacob Ullam.
You got it. Hey, you got it. You got my last name right. Thank you. How are you guys doing? Okay, I take that as everyone's doing well.
Good morning, sir.
Yeah, thank you for letting me speak on this. I, first of all, I appreciate you guys considering this. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for residents to produce protein in the backyard. And Mr. Flores, you're absolutely right. Typically, people do want to do this in a humane fashion, and so the amount of chickens is usually equated to the amount of square feet that your lot or your property can afford this type of situation. There's a lot of cities that do allow this. There's a lot of great information out there, kind of looking at what other people have done, such as, we mentioned, limiting chickens to, you know, two, three, four per site, but also making sure that that's a single or two-family residence. Also, making sure that these areas are setbacks so many feet upon your guys' discretion, based on hopefully the information that we'll get that you requested today from property lines. Also, one thing a lot of cities do is they'll incorporate provisions into the language that prevent the chickens from being in the house, in the garage, in sheds, things of that nature. I also like the idea, and I'm not opposed to the cost of requiring a permit to help, I don't personally think this is going to put a huge, there's a lot of talk about budget and, you know, using resources to come and please chickens. I don't think it's, that would be the situation. I personally think, I do not believe that whatsoever. But the committee of people who do kind of like to make food at their, at their home, who like to have chickens, who like to grow vegetables in their front yard, and even, especially in these times, where, I mean, let's be honest with you, if you didn't have chickens in your backyard seven weeks ago, you weren't eating eggs. So this is a really great thing that you guys are looking for at, and I really appreciate that, and I hope that you guys can get the information you need to decide that this is something that you can entrust your citizens with, because we would really like the opportunity to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rayald. Only one?
Yes, that was all.
Great. Okay, I will close public comments and come back to council for discussion or action.
If I may? So what got this started, I think, was a picture I put up during council comments, and it was a picture of my brother-in-law's, one of my brother-in-law's chickens. So he has a situation in which he shares with three other families, and they have some chickens in the backyard that they all kind of care for. And I asked him some questions about it, and his responses were that, I asked him, you know, how egg production was, and he said they got eight eggs in two days from four hens. So when we think about how many laying hens there should be, I think if we think in terms of eight eggs in two days from four hens, I think he's probably, that's pretty high rate right now, maybe because it's spring, but that might be a factor in determining how or what limits we should put on the amount of laying hens you can have. I asked him about the smell, he said there really isn't or hasn't ever been a smell. He suggested it's because he's, you know, put the coop in a place with lots of open air, which I think is something maybe to consider as well, to the degree that there is open air in a backyard, I think that'd be perhaps a requirement that we'd want to think about. And I, he said this, and I thought this was insightful as a result of his experience. He says it hasn't been as much about, you know, the cost for getting the, these eggs, because there's a cost to having a backyard set up like this. But he says it's been more for the experience for the kids. He says that as a result of them kind of being able to maintain and have some responsibility for taking care of these chickens, and actually being able to see, you know, where eggs come from, as opposed to just being in a supermarket, which is a, you know, kind of important concept to me. I think people have really lost sight of agriculture and its uses, and where food comes from in this state and other locations. This is an opportunity for kids, I think, to understand, all right, this is, this is how we get our eggs. It's not because we go to the grocery store and buy them. So I think that's another component for me that, you know, makes me want for us to move forward with this idea of at least looking into an ordinance amendment. So having said all of that, I'll, at this point, move that we request staff to initiate an ordinance amendment to Title VI and allow for backyard chickens. I hope that you've received enough information, staff, to be able to kind of put something together, and we, of course, can make some adjustments to it as you propose it. So that's my motion.
Oh, a second, Lynn. I have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk?
Councilor Ashbeck?
Absolutely not.
Councilor Flores?
Hi.
Councilor Moana Tua?
Aye.
Councilor Whalen?
Aye.
Mayor Besinger?
Aye. Going to item seven, consider approval of a letter of support for Senate Bill 1386, protecting fire hydrant funding, system funding. Luke is our presenter. Luke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What we're requesting is that councils authorize a letter of support for SB 1386. A little bit of background, we currently obviously maintain a water system for the city of Clovis, and included in that water system is a fire hydrant system to provide fire protection. And when we go fight fire, we don't charge that, we don't meter the water we use to fight the fire, we don't meter the water we use to maintain the system. We just disperse that cost as an overhead cost to all of our users. It's been a standard way that it's been done in this state since, I think, 1973, there was a statute adopted to that effect. When Prop 218 was passed, no one gave any thought to the miniscule cost of the fire, the firewater. I think we costed it out, and it would, it would equate to eight cents per connection per month, or something along that factor. Anyway, a very small amount. Well, what happened is there was recently a lawsuit, and Clovis was named in it, that they were, we were basically accused of violating Prop 218 because we were charging people that hadn't had a fire for some of the water that was used on a fire and for maintenance of the system. And David, jump in if I'm getting anything wrong here, but there were, I think, 81 cities named in this lawsuit in California, and in, as a result of that, Irvine Ranch Water District and one other city basically got their legislator to carry this bill that says this is a legal cost under Prop 218. We are certainly in favor of that. If it is not found to be a cost that's valid under Prop 218, we would have to basically take, figure out what it costs, and then pay that out of the general fund, which, as we already know, is extremely stressed right now. The system is available there for all users, and just because you didn't need it this year may not, you still need to have it available for you if you do have a fire in your house. So we think it's valid. The advantage of this bill is it basically would negate the lawsuit for all of these cities. It would make it a moot point, and it would settle the issue. So staff, wholeheartedly request your support and authorization to send a letter supporting this bill and to add our, the city of Clovis to the list of entities that are supporting it.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
What was that cost again, per household? Eight cents per, oh, eight cents per what?
My recollection is it's maybe 12 cents a year. It's only a year. So technically, the C loses that, of course, in a lawsuit, or out-of-pocket cost would not be a lot, but attorney's fees, of course, are what the attorneys are looking for. Some of the other cities, the cost may be higher, but I think the benefit of the letter is really, it says what we're doing is fine, what all these cities and what our agencies are doing is really fine. It's really a cost that should be borne by all of the users, because everybody benefits from having those fire hydrants, and it gets rid of the lawsuit, which is pretty frivolous, especially as the Clovis is very frivolous.
Lynn, do you have a question?
I do.
I do.
You were garbled, I'm sorry.
I do not have a question. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We will open this to the public. Any member of the public wish to address the council on this item? I see none in chambers. We had no correspondence, is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
Correct, nothing.
Do we have anything on the web?
No.
Okay, I will close public comments and come back to the council for discussion or action.
I'll make a motion for us to approve a letter of support for SB 1386, Protecting Fire Hydrant System Funding.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk?
Councilor Ashbeck?
Aye.
Councilor Flores?
Aye.
Councilor Moana Tua?
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen?
Aye.
Mayor Besseger?
Aye. Item made is a workshop for the city of Clovis council to conduct a workshop to discuss the impact on ongoing city operations during the COVID-19 state of emergency as declared by the federal government, state of California, county of Fresno, and city of Clovis, and to explore actions the city may take in response to the crisis. This is a consider approval of a resolution adopting Emergency Order 2020-14, assisting restaurants severely impacted by the COVID-19 crisis by allowing restaurants to... The option to temporarily expand capacity into the public and private common areas under specified circumstances. Luke is our presenter. Luke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The primary item for consideration tonight is an emergency order. Dealing with the restaurants, and Andy is really, really way out ahead and been putting this together. It's just one of the many ways he's been helping out the businesses in the city. So this time I'll turn over to Andy, and he can talk about the details of the order.
All right, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So restaurants have been allowed to reopen their dining rooms beyond just their takeout relatively recently, within the last 10 days. And one of the mitigating requirements for restaurants is to increase social distancing in those facilities, reducing their table counts significantly. Depending on the footprint of a restaurant, this could make it something that is not financially feasible for them to continue operations. So we've been looking for creative ways to assist them. And one of those is to allow them to expand their footprints beyond their current footprint, such as adding a patio in an adjacent public or private space into a parking area, onto a sidewalk. And staff is asking for this in order to work with the restaurants in expanding that area and complying with any kind of requirements to keep the public safe.
Hold on for just one second. My son is a licensee. Maybe I should step out of this discussion. What do you think, David?
I don't think there's... There's no financial interest. You don't have any financial interest in your son's business.
I have no interest in it.
I don't think you need to on this.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, continue.
That's fine. So we have done quite a bit of pre-work. All the departments have gotten together to discuss this and talk how this would roll out and how we could manage this well, including a very detailed look at some of our restaurants in Old Town, which have some unique issues. And we've come up with solutions for many of them. So we are ready to roll out if council so chooses. It's an opportunity to the restaurant community in Clovis through a variety of means and work with them over the next few weeks as they desire to expand their footprints if that's something that they would like to do. Now that concludes my report and presentation. I'm here for any questions regarding this.
Any questions for Andy or Luke?
On the exhibit, it talks about just the shopping center owner having consent. So if it's... Do you need consent from the tenants? Because one restaurant, but I'm an insurance guy, there's a shoe store guy. So in other words, you know, how does that get worked out? As long as they have consent from everyone? Are you looking at it that closely? Or as long as the owner just says okay, they work it out themselves? Can you kind of...
In a commercial center with an owner, we would look to them to take on the discussions with all their tenants regarding removal of parking or sidewalks, that they manage that themselves. And then we come to us with the restaurateur trying to implement what they proposed.
Okay. So any issues... They're handling it on the personal level between the owner and the tenants? Potentially, if there was any. Okay. And then also, issues of cleaning and maintaining, that's also up to them? They bring the plan to you, you approve it? That's also required, isn't there?
Yes, there's also requirements that the space be maintained and kept clean, regardless of whether it was on private or public property.
And it's not something they're paying for, right? It's a plan that comes to you, you approve, and we keep it. It's not where... It's another permit fee they're applying for.
Yeah, we don't have any plans for fees at this point to implement this program. We think we can handle it with our existing resources that is a way to support business in Clovis.
Yeah, I think for now, the no fees is what I would tend to support as well.
Okay, thank you. What say? Okay, so we get away with all our emergency orders but one or two? So...
We have a few left, mostly the internal. What we did away with was all of the orders dealing with closures. If there was an order closing restaurants, closing gyms, closing picnic shelters, we did away with those.
And the reason we're using this, the emergency order, is the vehicle is... Because it's faster, it circumvents having to go through the whole process of...
Well, we looked at the possibility of an urgency ordinance, but there is a whole bunch of codes that would have to be amended, and it's very complicated. So it's much easier to just do an emergency order where we can spend all the codes that might affect expansion and due to the emergency and the effect on businesses and trying to protect these businesses. So we can waive all of those temporarily. And also, it means this will go... When the emergency order is lifted, this will go away. And then we could start... And if it's working, we can always process some permanent ordinance amendments later. But this is the quickest and easiest way to do it.
So when does it not be... When does the emergency kind of fade? Because at some point, the governor's going to say, okay, it's over. So and then... But our businesses will still need something like this. So when do we decide to do something similar to this? Because I think they're going to need something like this in the interim before they're fully, you know, on their feet again. So do we also bring back a real ordinance or something that allows them to do this on top of this? Because I think this is a great idea, but I think we also need to back it up with something else that will...
I think that is certainly an option to bring that back. What we would like to do is get this emergency order in place now. And then as we kind of work through it, because this is all new to all of us, work through it, see what works, see what doesn't, see what demand there is for it. This order would stay in effect as long as we are under... You know, until such time that the council declares that the emergency is expired.
Because we're going by what the governor says, right? And it seems like, at least in the last few orders or last couple of things he's said, boom, all of a sudden, we're open. And our businesses have had no time to change their methods of doing business. So all of a sudden, boom, it's what he says. And our basically rules is going by what he says. And we don't have something else in place. I don't want to be caught behind the eight ball. So that's my concern.
So this order would stay in effect until council canceled or withdrew our emergency... Our local emergency order. So regardless of what the governor did, this order would stay in effect until such time that council lifted it. And if we saw there was going to be a need, we would try to get out ahead of it and...
So are our emergencies not tied to his emergency?
Yes and no.
I think we are.
I think it is, unless there's some unique circumstances here in Clovis. So most likely, when the governor lifts a statewide order, then we would probably end up lifting ours, unless there's something unique to Clovis. But we could certainly start looking at what it might look like to put this more permit.
So we start looking at something more... Because I do believe that restaurants are going to need a bridge to get to where they need to be and stand on their own feet even after this.
We would be looking at that. Now, keeping in mind that that would have to coordinate with some of the state's relaxation of ABC requirements and such so that they can expand their footprint. But we will definitely look at that and make sure that we don't get caught unprepared and that we have to take something away before we have a chance to put it back. So we'll make sure of that.
Lynn, do you want to weigh in?
Thank you. Andy, I didn't catch in the beginning, does this apply to any restaurant in any location city of Clovis, not just in the Old Town district, for example?
Yes.
I had a question about in the exhibit, where it says the expansion area, it's number two, shall be limited to areas adjacent to the existing business. Can you just say a little bit? It's a little bit... I think I forgot who was asking the question about what about my neighbor? And that my neighbor is adjacent to me, but maybe he or she doesn't think this is a great idea. How do you see that playing out?
So if this is in a shopping center where there's multiple businesses that are being leased, the property owner would need to work with all the parties involved to ensure everyone's on the same page. And staff, in regards to Old Town, a little bit different circumstance, we're doing pretty extensive outreach in that area to look at different options that would reduce impacts to adjacent businesses if a restaurant decided to move forward.
I just wonder if we're setting up some circumstance? Because if you're adjacent to me and I put my tables in front of your shoe store, or whatever Vaughn's example was, we'll have to just see. So I don't know if there's any language in number two that could be a little more descriptive, like in the space, immediately in front of the restaurant, or something that just tightens it up a bit. And my second question, is there any discussion about converting that lot? I don't know our parking lot numbers very well, actually, at all. But the parking lot behind the Tralio Salsa, that square, converting all of that to dining? Or is that too much?
We've talked to the restaurants in that area. Not all of them are interested at this point, but we have prepared plans to be able to do that, or some variation of it.
All right. Anyway, my suggestion... I'm really trying hard not to be sarcastic in saying I'm not present, so it won't matter, but that number two be tightened up a little bit to be more specific on what adjacent to means in terms of a business.
I think what you're stating, Lynn, is what our intent was by using the word adjacent, immediately adjacent to the restaurant.
Probably should say immediate in front of, or something like that. Adjacent is next door to me, is my neighbor is adjacent to me, my neighbor is not in front of me. So I just think it's probably worth maybe a different adjective.
I think Lynn has a good point. Maybe adjacent with permission or something where you don't have... Where we don't have to referee between two neighbors who haven't liked each other for a while. That would be certainly helpful. I think that this could become a seasonal boutique item, especially for our downtown businesses. Something that I think, you know, when we talked about downtown Clovis being a gas lamp-type area, I think... I mean, the Farm Table and some of the other community events that we do down there are really... They're a good draw. And on a summer evening, when it starts to cool off a little bit, being able to go downtown at nine o'clock and have a late dinner and a drink or two could really be helpful for a lot of these businesses that have struggled for very long. Any other questions for staff on this? I will open this to the public. Any member of the public inside the chambers want to address the council on this item? Seeing none? Mr. Clerk, we didn't have anything in writing, did we?
We do not.
We have anything on the web?
Carrie?
No.
Okay, I will close public comments and come back to council for discussion and action.
I'd like to make that motion, adopting that Order 2020-14 to assist our restaurants, as outlined by staff, with some adjustment to... Condition to just a narrowing of the word adjacent, or more definition of that word adjacent, please.
And I've got possible language. Maybe we would say adjacent and fronting. Do you think that would work? Adjacent and fronting the business?
So my only comment would be is that, like, we have some restaurants with back areas, back public parking. So immediately adjacent or something that gives us some flexibility in addressing that.
I would interpret...
Maybe it's just immediately in front of or behind the restaurant, you know, as outlined in a plan that you're going to present to Andy anyway. But I just... I don't want someone to get all worked out. They can be in front of the shoe store, but they really serve Mexican food, and that doesn't seem really great for the shoe store. That's all.
And don't forget, the plan does have to get approved by the city. So we... I think Andy, as a director, would solve that.
Okay, with that language, I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk?
Councilor Ashbeck?
Aye.
Councilor Flores?
Aye.
Councilor Moana Tua?
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen?
Aye.
Mayor Besseger?
Aye.
Come to city manager comments. Luke?
Actually, we have... Item number nine is consider approval of change of council meeting schedule. And we are recommending that we cancel next week's meeting. We will have the meeting on June 14th, but skip the one... Or June 15th, but skip the one on the 8th.
Any questions for Luke? Lynn?
No, there's nothing to question on that one.
Thank you. Any member of the public wish to address the council on this item? Any member present in the chambers? Seeing none? Mr. Clerk, there was nothing in writing?
Nothing.
And there's nothing on the web?
None.
Okay, close public comments. Come back to council for action and discussion.
I'll move that we cancel the next meeting on June 8th.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk?
Councilor Ashbeck?
Aye.
Councilor Flores?
Aye.
Councilor Moana Tua?
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen?
Aye.
Mayor Besseger?
Aye.
And now we come to council city manager comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank all of the department heads and their staff for helping put together this budget. When we recognized the magnitude of revenue loss, you know, I asked for, okay, what savings can we make? What basically, what can we cut? And they responded overwhelmingly with coming with actually more cuts than I expected them to come up with on the first round. You know, I sort of expected it was going to be, what can we cut? And they'd come up with a number, and we'd add it all up. And Jay would add it all up and say, not there yet. And we'd have to go back and say, you need to cut more. And in fact, it was... They came up with a number that I think it may not have surprised Jay. I think it did. It's definitely surprised me with the amount. So hats off to all of them for recognizing that what's good for the city is good for their department and tightening their belts. So I do want to thank all of them.
Thank you, Luke. And now we come to council comments. Bob? Any pictures?
I've got a picture of a steer. John, I don't suppose you got my email, or maybe I didn't send it to you in a timely fashion.
I apologize, I noticed it after the meeting started.
Yeah, no problem.
So I do not.
Okay. So it was just basically an ongoing kind of analysis and comment about, you know, where we are related to other communities within the county of Fresno. It's been almost a month since we chose to remove all of our orders and delegate responsibility enforcement to the state of California and then to also the county. I think there was a concern, at least in some of our minds, that, you know, whether this was the right call. And I'm sure that that concern still is, you know, it's one that I have, that, you know, whether we did the right thing. One of the ways, and the very few ways, that we can actually measure that right now in a reliable way is based on the data that is published on Fresno County's Department of Public Health. As you recall, previously, I've really focused a lot on the three... Really, the four largest communities in the county of Fresno outside of the city of Clovis. And so those communities are Fresno, Selma, Sanger, and Reedley. And all of them have significantly more cases than we do in the city of Clovis. So I just want to repeat that we're really clear on that. It's not a proportion that I'm talking about here. Selma, Sanger, and Reedley have more positive cases, and they have populations of about 25,000. City of Clovis has fewer than those, and we have a population of 119,000. So proportionately, I keep looking to see if we're seeing some equilibrium in our positive cases in the city of Clovis. cases in the City of Clovis related to those other communities I've addressed. We're not even getting close to equilibrium with those other communities. So that's a really good sign for us that whatever it is that we're doing in the City of Clovis has apparently been working. I would note as well that Orange Cove and Mendota now have more cases than the City of Clovis and their populations are significantly smaller than the City of Clovis. So again, what we've been doing seems to be, you know, a real tribute to our citizens in the way that they've acted responsibly. Also, a new figure that they put up on the Department of Health, and I'm not sure how many of you have looked at it, but in addition to the number of positive cases, they're now looking at how many have recovered. So the, the total figure is how many are under investigation, unknown recovery, plus of those that are, have recovered. And proportionally, I would say that maybe the exception of Fireba, we have more people that are recovered in the City of Clovis than any other community, again, with the exception of probably Fireba. So we, for whatever reason, were hit early and presumably have hit early and have recovered as a result of some of the steps that have been taken over the, the time that this crisis has been upon us. So I, I just always feel an obligation to kind of report on that status and I appreciate you guys listening.
I really appreciate that, those numbers, because I'm, I'll talk about my numbers when, when it's my turn. Vaughn?
Yeah, I just wanted to report, I think Chad and, and John Holt got this information also from the census. As of June 1st, we are at 70.5% response, which is excellent. That's almost like 14% higher than the state. And at the same, at the end of 2010, our return rate was only at 72.5. So we're going to surpass that. So thank you to the efforts of Chad and, and John and however many other staff and departments that make sure that our residents are counted as much as possible. I, I also wanted to say to our police department during this time that we support you and as I learned more about what Clovis has done in your policing philosophy throughout the years, and I forgot which captain or chief started it, but it's more of the community involvement, getting to know the residents, that it shows how much support we have built with our officers and our community. And that in times like this, you, you will have more of the community behind you and supporting you. And when something or a department does something good, we, we have to praise that and stand by it because it can be lost so easily, especially with what we are seeing. At the same time, it doesn't mean that we don't condemn, you know, the, the few who have tainted the profession, who have made it where all men and women in blue have gotten a bad rap from it. And so, but I wanted to take a moment that, you know, stay safe, we're behind you and we will continue to support you, especially during these, these very difficult societal times in the community at large.
Thanks, Vaughn. Jose?
That's great. As a law enforcement professional, I appreciate people like that. Yeah, that's, that's something that I also want to echo. I'm, I'm, I think addicted to social media and I look out there and I see a lot of posts from people that are supporting law enforcement. And I like the presentation that our chief gave earlier that, that we do, this department does so much for our community and it's also supported by the community and it's, it's because of the product they, they deliver. And it's a relationship. And it, and that relationship didn't start yesterday, it didn't start a week ago, it's been there for a long, long time. And they know what it takes to develop that relationship. And I think the numbers that the chief has given us, it's also indicative of, of the good people that live in Clovis and their efforts to keep their city as peaceful and as safe as possible. And that's why they do call the police department when, when, when it's necessary and not until it's necessary. And so that's a great relationship to have. And, and you're right, Vaughn, when it's time to call out something horrible, something disgraceful, call it out. Because what we saw in that video was something that in my almost 40 years in law enforcement, I've, there is no professional police academy that's ever taught that technique. So you're absolutely right, we need to, there are bad apples everywhere and I don't know what that guy was thinking. It was horrible. Thank you.
Lynn?
I'm fine, thank you, nothing today.
Okay, let's see. I, I really enjoyed Bob's numbers because I, I think it shows that as a community, we've, we've done, we've done pretty well. But to Lynn's point about the potential and the fear and the reality of this, just comparing Lakewood, New Jersey, again, to Clovis. Lakewood's numbers were 2,353 positive cases and as of today, 155 deaths. And I think three weeks ago, that number was 88. So this is a very, we, I don't know, dodged a bullet is the right term, but I, I think we were fortunate under a lot of circumstances where we got out early, did the right thing. And our community, in our region, not being as congested and as tightly populated certainly helped us avoid those numbers. Because if we had 155 people die in this community, we as a community would be devastated. Now, I also, and I was going to bring this up during the workshop, you all got a, a copy of a letter that I sent to the Department of Consumer Affairs Secretary imploring her to step up for her people. Fortunately, fairly closely after that, they did. Hopefully they'll do the same thing with the nail salons and all the other people in the industry so that these nice people can go back to work and pay their bills. That's all I have. We will be adjourned. We are going to be going into closed session. Is there going to be anything to report out, Mr.?
No, we're just going to go into closed session on the items on the agenda and there will be nothing to report out.
Great, thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, good night.